Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is December the 5th, 2017. We're here at 602, here at City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Fred Orkut with the coordinator of the Hood County Prayer Task Force to lead us in our invitation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by councilperson Trish Reiner. All rise, please.
Father, Lord Jesus Christ, we come before you in humility and meekness to ask that you would be glorified in tonight's City Council meeting. Lord, thank you for Mayor Hewlett and these council people whom you have appointed to give their time to governing this city well for the benefit of its people and businesses. Bless the mayor and council as they uphold what is right and correct what is wrong. Father, fill them with the knowledge of your will and with all spiritual wisdom and understanding. Enable them to walk worthy of you, Lord, and strengthen them with your power. I pray, Father, that they would be people of integrity, love, wisdom, and sound mind, that they would trust you and seek your guidance in all of the matters that come before them. Lord, you put them here, and I pray that they would be ever mindful, that they serve at your pleasure. Father, Granbury is a city that is friendly toward your people. Thank you, Lord. May these council members ever strive to see that this remains true. May they exalt you personally and in their public life. Grant that they will continually dig into your Word, the Holy Bible, to fellowship with you and let you give them understanding and courage always to do what is right. May they trust you and rely on you in everything as they do, Father. Bless them and their families. Lord Jesus, you came and died on the cross so that those who trust in you could have their sins forgiven and have eternal life. Thank you. This is the time of year when we celebrate your birth. Enable us to focus on you and not so much on the trappings of the season. Be glorified in these council people and in and through the people of Granbury. Minister to us and raise up more people who will trust in you. Father, one last thing. I lift up Donna, a city employee who's dealing with cancer. I pray that you administer to her, that you heal her. We trust you in all these things, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And pledge the Texas flag. Along the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, a one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time of the program, we have the citizen participation. I've got one speaker tonight to lead. And I won't go through all the rules. This gentleman here has been up here several times, Mr. J.C. Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, council, and the city manager, it's thank you for giving us the opportunity to have a few comments. As Mr. Orkut said in his prayer about Granbury being a friendly town, it is. It's been that away for a long time. He also asked that, during his prayer, he talked about putting your trust in Jesus. That's what the citizens of Granbury has done with this council as it now sits. And I hope that you will put your trust in the citizens because they put their trust in you. And I would ask that everyone on this council, whether you're new or whether you're older, that you would listen to what the citizens tell you whenever they have a comment. I think that's one of the reasons there was a change. And I think that we've got a good council, and I would like to see them work together and for the betterment of this city. So congratulations to everyone up there because you've got a position that a lot of people are depending on you. So with that, I'll say thanks. Amen. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, J.C. At this time, we'll move into the consent agenda. Council, we've got several items on there. I think everybody's had an opportunity to read through them. The first one being to consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of November 20th, 2017, and the special meeting minutes of November 21st, 2017, regular meeting. The next one being to consider approving a renewal of a Microsoft Volume Licensing enrollment. The third one being to consider approving an executive filing of three electrical easements necessary for the new runway at the city of Granbury. Number four is to consider adopting Resolution 1719 authorizing designated city employees to volunteer their service and equipment during the work hours to assist Hood County Christmas for children. The fifth one being to consider approving a sponsorship letter and fundraising effort for the Run for the Peeps. Number six is to consider approving donation letter and fundraising effort for the community-wide Easter egg hunt. Number seven is to consider adopting Resolution 1720 amending and restating the deferred compensation plan in the form of the ICMA Retirement Compensation 457 Governmental Deferral Compensation Plan and Trust to include all associated amendments. And folks, that one there is one that the employees are going to be able to probably get more back than what they put into it, and it's a much more friendlier enrollment, it looks like. Also, number eight is to consider approving an interloco rental agreement between the Hood County and the city of Granbury for the property located at 220 North Travis Street, otherwise known as American Town Hall, to be used for the library facility. So council, you've got all those consent agenda items on there for the incoming council members. If there's anything on there you want to change, or if there's something you want to ask questions about, or if you want to pull something off the consent agenda and move it to the deliberation agenda item, then we can do that at this time. Council, we have any conversation, any thoughts on these things? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen to approve.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman on the couch. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. Item number nine is a presentation by Scott Bean of Halls Hill Association LLP concerning economic development. And I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, Chris Kaufman, with the speakers.
Eben, as I mentioned previously, we wanted to have a little bit of education about this economic development tool called the Public Improvement District. And so I've invited Scott Bean with Halls Hill and Associates. They are out of Houston, but they travel all over the state on a regular basis. And Mr. Hawes actually lives in mineral wells, so it's kind of like hometown folk on most here. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Scott and teach us a little bit about what we can do.
Thanks, Chris. Mayor, council, it's nice to be here. Scott Bean, Halls Hill and Associates. We are based primarily out of Houston, but we do do work all over the state. So Public Improvement Districts is, I guess, at our company, it's the area I specialize in. We do a lot of them. PIDs, as they're referred to, are governed by Chapter 372 of the Local Government Code. And with a Public Improvement District, in the case of residential development, which is what I believe we're talking about today, the effort is to finance infrastructure, public infrastructure amenities, trails, whatever the case may be, as long as it's public. And the way it's financed is through an assessment on the property. Now, functionally, the way that works is if you have a raw land development, a new subdivision, for instance, the property owner, the developer, is going to petition the City Council to create a Public Improvement District on his behalf. As the area is subdivided and the lots are laid out, the purchaser of those lots and those houses will inherit the obligation to pay the pit assessment that the property owner has requested be placed on the property by the City Council. The level of assessment varies depending on what type of assessment rate you want to have, what you're trying to finance through the pit, if you want to do all the water, sewer drainage, paving, or if you just want to finance a boulevard, something to that effect. So that's where we get involved. We look at the financing, what is trying to be accomplished by creation of the pit. Is the developer trying to recover 50% of his costs to make the land and the lots more marketable? Is he trying to recover all of his costs and over what time period that would occur? So we run those numbers and do different analyses to find the spot that not only the developer is comfortable with, but the City Council as well, because the pit is solely a creation of the city. There's no other governing body. Any specific questions?
How long does it take to set one up, Scott?
It can be set up in 60 days. There's advance notice requirements in the paper to create the pit and then also to allow the assessment. There's another public hearing required with an advance notice in the paper. But if the council, if the city body is willing and is promoting the pit, it can be created relatively quickly. If there's a learning process and workshops are necessary to bring the council on board, it can take a little bit longer, obviously.
Scott, is it primarily, did you say, for new subdivisions?
There's two kinds of PIDs. There's capital improvements pit, which would be a new subdivision in infrastructure. And then there's what's called a service pit, which is services above and beyond what the city's willing to do, like additional security, marketing, things of that nature. And that's not what we're talking about here. So yes, for residential development.
I think what he's talking about is more of a TERS-type process. And I put that on the agenda in case it needed to be discussed. And I know that that's not your bailiwick specifically.
No, I do a lot of TERSs.
You probably know enough about it to talk about it.
I'd be happy to ask TERSs as well.
Just so we all know and communicate, basically, the TERS is a similar tool. It's just used for reinvestment. So like, if you had an area that was dilapidated, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, the difference between a TERS and a pit primarily is that the TERS, there's not an extra tax or an extra assessment on the property. The governing entities, the county, the school district, the city, agree to forego their taxes or a certain percentage of their taxes for a certain term to pay for the infrastructure.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
So is this a temporary thing once the debt is relieved, it goes away?
Yes, sir. Typically, with a pit, the developer is going to advance the funds to put the infrastructure in and then will be paid back over a certain amount of years from the assessments as they come into the city account. So once that obligation is paid off, the pit ends, and there's no longer any obligations with regard to that.
So what are the disclosure rules? If I go to closing, will I find out after the fact, or will I find out before?
No, we require that there be a notice to purchasers. And really, the best point to do that is when there's a contemplated sale or the sales agent can divulge the pit well in advance, and then there'll be another notice at closing that will be executed.
Correct. So it gives them a chance to choose on the developer and/or the builder instead of us?
Absolutely.
I love this.
Yeah. Like I said, we do a lot of these, and that is the reason we set them up, is that the city does not want to be involved. They just want to make sure everything's publicly bid and everything's disclosed. And then the purchaser can make the informed decision whether they want to inherit that obligation or not.
What's a failure for a pit? What can go wrong with a pit?
Well, the assessment can be too high, and lot and home sales would suffer. We have reduced assessments and PIDs in the past. The developer was trying to get too much back on the infrastructure costs, and either the home builders wouldn't take the lots down, or once they did, they couldn't sell the houses. And they've come back to reduce it.
What's the success rate on small towns like ours? Do you have some similar areas to ours that have been very successful that you can give us examples?
Well, with PIDs, typically, the market is already populated with muds. So there's already an extra tax typically out there in the market. So the PIDs are actually more favorable to the home buyer than the mud because it's set one time. It's a level annual assessment that amortizes like a home mortgage, whereas a mud tax can go up and down depending on the debt service requirements and the value out there. So PIDs are very successful in the market where muds are the competition.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Allen.
What is a normal term on a pit versus the, I don't know how you say it, TRZ?
Typically, we'll set up a TERS for 30 years. And that way, you've got a build-out period, and then you've got the ability to do 20-year debt, amortize that, and service that debt. A pit can, we've got a pit that's 15 years, and we've got PIDs that are 25, and we have some that are 30.
All right. And then the other question is, I know you're not familiar with our area probably, but Chris, correct me, I think one thing we had talked about was Kroger Shopping Center. Would this work for something like that?
Not a pit. That would be more of a TERS or 380 agreement. This is more, the pit is more along for residential development.
Okay. But if we did the deal for, we've got a shopping center that's anchored, been closed for four years now, something like that. It's only two? It seems like it's been four. But it really needs to be rep. I mean, and then we've got a restaurant just closed that, you know, the businesses are going away.
Okay.
So we need to come in and spark it up. And if we did one of these, I guess it would be the TRZ. In other words, they would pay the city back? Explain that one more time.
Well, I think in the example you've laid out where you're trying to incentivize a developer to come in and take over a failed business or an area or a shopping center, Chris is right, a 380 agreement would be the most appropriate tool there. It's probably too small for a TERS, and a pit doesn't work on developed commercial property as far as getting an incentive in place for a developer to come in.
Okay, so we would use the pit like a ranch?
Presidential development.
Right.
Like the ranch, yeah.
Something like that, if they wanted to.
Yeah.
Right. With the 380, you would just agree to pay back the sales taxes and property taxes for a certain amount of years as an incentive for the developer to come in.
Like we did for Kroger and HEB, those are 380 agreements. Right. Yeah. So, you know, when you get into a TERS, you need to be talking about millions of dollars because this is a fairly expensive process to set up and administer. And so you need to be doing something pretty substantial for that investment.
Let's just say that we take over the school, the gym we've been talking about, and it's $6 million. Is that big enough?
No.
Really?
Well, there's not going to be any revenue generated by appraised values there.
But we're not taxed.
Right. The TERS is an economic development tool for business purposes, not for us developing recreation and not taxing.
I'm just trying to figure out where we can get the money.
Well, that's a whole nother discussion for later, but what I was trying to do is help you understand how pit works, and, you know, the possibility of that coming up in the near future is pretty strong. So we need to be asking our consultant his advice on what to do and timelines and that kind of stuff.
Right. And I just wanted to reiterate that with PIDs, the city is in control. There's no advisory body. There's no, you can't have an advisory body if it has no power. So the City Council controls the whole process. There's no Texas Water Commission or anything involved.
And can you clarify the two ways it can take on debt? The city can do it, or the developer, however we want to set it up?
Typically, you would have a development agreement that I would bring forward on behalf of the developer that says, if you do this, we will levy the assessment, and we will collect it for you and reimburse you by what accrues in the pit account. And that's your sole source of reimbursement. That would be why I recommend it. If the developer's amenable to that, that's the way you want to go. You don't want to have the city standing in there, you know, on the hook for anything.
And if the developer defaults, what happens?
Well, if the lots are already there and the infrastructure's already there, someone's going to take that over, and they would inherit the development agreement. So they would be entitled to the revenue that comes back. And I have seen that situation with a bank.
Are they exempt from bankruptcy? Say if the developer takes bankruptcy and the bank takes over, does that pit still stay on there?
Yes, that pit still stays there, and the bank would be entitled to the receivables. It's collateral.
So where taxpayers end up, it, we're better off to let the builder or developer get the money, and we just collect.
Correct. Right.
Safest way.
Right. You set it up, you agree to collect it and reimburse him, and the city doesn't stand in at all, other than to control the process.
And Scott touched on this, but like, the infrastructure that they're wanting to finance, when they're utilizing these revenues for reimbursement, we require them to go through all the procurement processes that the state law requires that they normally wouldn't have to do if they weren't dealing with government money. So, you know, there's a little more scrutiny. You're actually awarding the bid in conjunction with the developer. There's an annual audit that takes place that has to be done, and then the council determines, okay, we're going to pay this much towards the developer this year out of the pit revenue that was collected. There's usually a fee set up for the city to administer that that comes out of those pit revenues. So it's truly just a tool trying to help a developer get something going in our community.
Does it have to be inside the city limits or could be in our?
The county can set up a pit, but if the city's going to do it, it needs to be inside the city.
So anyway, all you developers out there watching us on live stream, I would encourage you to come talk to me about this. We certainly need more subdivisions in about a year. I'll be there in the morning, about 11:00.
Council, any more questions for Scott or any concerns about this item? We'll probably be getting some more information on that. Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Good to see you.
No action taken on that item. Our next item is a public hearing to consider approving a request for an FIA and a final plat. Chris, do you have a staff report on that?
Eben, I've got planning director Sopcheck ready and ready to roll here, so got a couple of projects to look at.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and Mr. Manager. We've seen this particular application as a preliminary plat a few years, a few months ago. What's being presented is a final plat application, which is proposing a warehouse RV boat storage facility. Again, we saw this a couple of months ago in the form of a preliminary plat application. All the variances to the subdivision ordinance were processed along with the preliminary plat. This final plat has no variances tied to the request. Just a little background information, we saw this layout not too long ago. It proposes a private detention pond, private detention pond to the northwest corner of the property. There'll be a small office fronting Acton Highway to the south. The main entrance will be off Acton Highway. There'll be an egress point on Fall Creek Highway, which is to the right of the screen. This is on a muds infrastructure, so it will have a service line from the office to a sewer line along Acton Highway. There'll be an internal water line inside the property with proper fire hydrant coverage. That was submitted in the engineering plans. The engineer of public works and the inspections department has all signed off on the plans and approved the FIA. The construction cost is estimated roughly $112,000. The developer has submitted a payment performance bond. Our requirement is that the payment performance bond be geared in the amount of 120% of the construction cost. So that's why you see the cost difference between the bond and the total construction cost itemized on the FIA. So the bond itself is a little over $130,000. A mud, this is a three-party contract with the FIA, so A mud has signed on the FIA as well and will receive the dedicated easements internal to the plat where the water lines being located. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this particular request the previous month and unanimously voted to approve the final plat application as presented by the applicant. Your staff has looked at the form of the FIA and the surety guaranteeing those improvements. It all seems appropriate and in line with our supplemental requirements. So your staff is recommending executing the FIA, and your P and Z is recommending approving the final plat as submitted by the applicant. Mayor, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I opened up the public hearings. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? No, I'll close the public hearing. Council, are there any discussion or any questions for Scott on this item, the FIA or the final plat? If not, I'll entertain a motion to execute the FIA.
So moved.
I got a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
I got a second by multiple people, Mr. Corgan down there.
I want.
You want? So we have a motion and a second. Council, any more discussion on this? All in favor of the FIA? The aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? That is approved. Next, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the final plat as stated.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan.
Second.
I got a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on that item? All in favor of the final plats, the aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing to consider adopting Order 1773. Chris, do you have a staff report on that item?
Mayor, I need to recuse on this one.
Okay, we have a recusal of this one here, Mr. Gary Couch, Council.
I'll step aside.
Yes.
Eben, we, obviously, this is for property that Mr. Couch owns, and I'll turn it over to Scott to give us a report from the P and Z.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and Mr. Manager. What's being proposed by the applicant is to amend the current plan development that's for the property of the lodge and the complex across the street. You can see the area that's in purple is delineating the plan development district and incorporates two lots of record. Again, this is the aerial that shows the lodge to the south and the incorporated development to the north. This plan development was set up in 2011. You can see the existing itemized design requirements that are tied to the 2011 development plan and the adoption ordinance. This particular amendment to the PD proposes a couple of things. It wanted to allow for the construction of 14 additional carports. P and Z held the first of the public hearings in October, and what was originally presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission was the carports along the street frontage for the head-in parking area. See if I can get this to work. There we go. So all the carports were located along this in the initial presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission had a very intense discussion about the carports. And if you're familiar with the area, you'll notice that the land rises up along the sidewalk. There's a retaining wall, and they felt that the carports lifted up along the street frontage would be a little too aesthetically displeasing along the entryway into Pearl Street. And they made their notation verbally to the developer at the October meeting, and they made it clear that if that's where the developer wanted to make his pitch for these carports, that they wouldn't be looked upon favorably. So they tabled the request and asked the developer, the applicant, to redesign and consider relocating the carports. The developer has since come back for those carports and located the 14 here internal to the site, and there's one here as well. So he's taken note of the Planning and Zoning Commission's directive in order to relocate those from the street frontage to the interior of the property. As a part of relocating those, again, here's our itemized listing of the two variances. You can see a variance to the exposed columns. Our zoning ordinance requires that the carports have rock or stone columns vertically to the horizontal member of the carport. And then the second variance is pertaining to the carport definition. Our zoning ordinance requires that only three cars can be covered per carport structure. The purpose of that is to allow for more open space when you build these carports. The developer has obviously requested... Um, the developer is obviously requesting a variance to that definition in order to build these, uh, carports. Obviously, it allows more than three, but you can also see that the carports that are currently there are more than three and they were existing and in place already. Those are the two variances, um, to allow for the construction of the carports within the PD. The Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this revised plan, voted unanimously to approve it. They had a choice of five, uh, options insofar as how to vote on this particular request. They chose option number two, which was to approve the development plan with reasonable design modification and approve, uh, the ordinance amending the plan development. Those design modifications are one, that two bollards with no parking sign needs to be installed by the east fire hydrant. That location is here, there's a hydrant here, there's a Chevron, uh, no parking area here. And in coordination with the fire, uh, official, they wanted to make sure that that fire hydrant was secured, that nobody can park an encumbrance of it. So they rolled that particular condition into the design modification for the approval of the PD. Uh, the second design modification is a ten-foot space is required for any hydrant on the property to any vertical column of the carport. And then thirdly, locate the water lines before penetrating the parking lot surface to anchor the support columns of the carport if approved. So that's, that's your, uh, presentation coming from you, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mayor, I'll be happy to entertain any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number eleven? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns on this item to Scott and the staff?
I've got a question, Scott.
Councilman Allen.
What are you saying about the columns? Are they gonna be stucco, rock, or brick?
They're gonna be just raw, uh, iron or metal. Uh, so he's requesting a variance to not put any rock or brick on the, uh, columns.
Is that, is that what we did in the, uh, on the other ones?
We've, we've issued, uh, I can tell you the PDs have been set up to allow for no rocking of the columns on other developments.
Oops, sorry.
This is hand, yeah. I'm not sure what's going on.
I'll take that lot.
I'm trying to find the photo for you.
There we go.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, uh, earlier. And that's the ones that are there now, so...
Right.
Yeah.
So we've seen other apartment complexes ask for the same variance request, not only to the City Council, but to the Board of Adjustment as well. And, uh, where they have these tight spaces, you can, be part of the argument that we've heard in the past as staff is if you, if you put like a two-by-two column around that and the cars, it just gives them more of a...
Closer.
Yeah. Or an encumbrance to bait and pain.
I remember we discussed that when he did it before, but I couldn't remember why. We didn't do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So, as you're aware, I'm, I'm very familiar with this property. I lived there for four years. I've never understood why we didn't require you put rock columns. At my office, when I applied for covered parking, it was mandatory you put rock columns. Why in the world, as a city, do we have this in place when apparently all we have to do is ask and it's, we don't have to do it?
It, as a staff, if we see a rash of these design variations, then that's our note...
How to define rash?
Well, a number, a number of, of variances that are getting consistently approved, then that's when staff takes note of it and, uh, it's something that we need to look at in sofar as a, a design amendment to the zoning ordinance if the council wants to, just take that off the books.
But aren't we setting ourselves up for, uh, some litigation if we say you can and you can't? Because when you told me I couldn't go without rock, then yes, you can put more cars in there without rock, you don't need, need that much space. I would love to have an additional parking space behind mine if I didn't have to have rock.
Right.
So my question is, if we just have to ask, if you don't tell me yes, if I would've asked and you didn't tell me yes, aren't we setting ourselves up for a problem with the property owner? It's subjective at that point, right?
Well, from staff's vantage point, it's not...
If you kiss the right way at the P and Z and you come up here and be nice to people, they say yes. If you're on the wrong side of that, it'll be no every time.
From staff's perspective, we administer to the, uh, black and white language of the ordinance. You know, if you want to come in and pull a permit for a carport and we can issue a permit, then we'll have to rock it up. The only process is, is to create it or roll it into a plan development or go to the Board of Adjustment and ask for a variance request. And then it's really up to the council or the ZVA who's considering the, uh, the request, whether or not it's a feasible request based on their review.
The only thing I would like in minutes, because I know it's been attempted several times, I would like to call it, to put in the minutes that there will be nothing up next to the road, because I know it's been attempted many times. You and I talked about it five years ago and it was stated we simply can't do that. There's an easement there that we cannot move into. And I would hate for somebody to accidentally drill a hole out there and say, I'm sorry, but it's there. That's the only, I would like that in the minutes, that they will not be up next to the street.
So this, this particular development plan that shows the location of the carport will, will be tied to the adoption ordinance. And when they pull permits, they will be tied to the site plan and that's where only they, these carports can be built.
I understand what the plan is now. I certainly understand, thank you.
And if the council chooses to go with option two, Councilman Mobley, I believe that, that kind of spells out exactly what you're saying, but it would have to be defined, right? You know, with what he's saying?
Sorry. I was trying to put it on option two.
Well, I mean, if that's what the council chooses to go, with that option, for instance, I'm just using that as an example. Where it says that the approved development was reasonable design modifications and addressed the variances necessary above the ordinance, uh, design modification. So you could actually incorporate that into option two, couldn't you?
Well, when we approved the development plan, we're tying this site plan to the adoption ordinance and the location of those carports. So that's being automatically in your motion to approve where it says the, the development plan with reasonable design modifications also rolled in the, the more specified, uh, wants, uh, city staff, specifically the, the bollards and the ten-foot separation requirements from the office that, or, uh, ten-foot separation requirements from the hydrant, which was, uh, requested by the, uh, fire inspector.
Mr. Kaufman'd like to speak.
I just want to be clear that everybody understands that the plan development is on both sides of the street and there are no carports being approved anywhere on the north side of Pearl Street, just in those highlighted areas on the south side. And, and in order to expand those carports anywhere else in that entire plan development, they would have to go through this entire process again and come back through the P and Z and also the City Council.
Is not the property on the north side, does that not have a different owner now?
It does, but it's still under the same PD. From what I understand, it's a different owner.
That's correct. And, and both owners of record had to sign to amend this PD just for these carports on one property.
But you only do it in the bottom and where they're at, like Councilman Mobley said, where they're at's where they're gonna be, correct?
Right.
Okay.
It's only placed with permittals.
Okay.
And they are visible from the road?
Sure, somewhat, yes.
I mean, pretty clear. Hey, Counsel, any more questions, concerns to Scott or city staff? Well, if not, I'll entertain a motion to, uh... Turn my phone on.
Fifty dollars.
So moved.
Actually, I turned it off, I thought. I think I turned it back on.
Sure, man.
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion at this time then to, uh, recommend option two with the design modifications as described.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? At this time, I'll take a record vote. Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner?
Aye.
That is passed. Option number two. Have Mr. Couch come back in, please. Councilman Couch has returned to the dais. Next item is item number twelve, a public hearing to consider approving a request of Paul and Judy Ernt to replat. Chris, do you have a staff report on that item?
Yes, um, there's an awesome picture for you there and then Scott is gonna break you on the P and Z and the report.
Mayor, Council, this proposed replat application proposes to combine two lots of record currently into one, one lot. Uh, you can see the area, on the aerial, that we have a structure built on the southernmost lot. The second lot to the north is undeveloped. The property owner of both lots, which is the same, wishes to combine both lots into one complete lot. This is a decrease in density. This property is located in Mallard Point. Because of these locations and the subdivisions that are developed prior county standards, we typically see a litany of, uh, of urban design standard variances tied to our subdivision plan as a part of these proposals. We have a variance to four-eight regarding streetlights, three-nine and four-six regarding water lines. There is a six-inch water line on this location. There's a hydrant where the halo coverage covers all of the lot, so the, the fire hydrant coverage is good in this area. We have hydrant coverage. We have a variance to three-nine and four-five regarding sewer lines. This area is supported by septic systems. And we have a variance to three-one E and four-ten regarding the urban standard street. Again, this is a county standard street with borrowed ditches on each side. You have a, uh, a letter from the city engineer recommending approval of the variances as submitted. Again, this is a de-intensification on the number of living units, less demand on the infrastructure. Therefore, your city staff and your city engineer and your Planning and Zoning Commission are all recommending approval of the variances as submitted and the replat application as submitted.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any discussion or, or questions for Scott or staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said replat with the said variances.
So moved.
I got a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? That is approved. Our next item is to consider adopting ordinance seventeen seventy-four, amending the budget for the general fund for the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, and ratifying the total construction cost of the Town Square Streetscape project. And Counsel, you've got a lot of information on this, a lot of numbers here, and I'm gonna turn this over to Chris Kaufman and his staff to, uh, kinda give you an outline of it, if you would, please, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. In your agenda, on your, uh, agenda report, uh, I've included a couple of items for you in there, but I just want to review a little bit before we get into this, that originally, uh, the council approved two-point-six, seven-three, six-oh-seven towards this project, appropriated that much money toward it, two-point-six million and some change. So, um, also, I wanted you to be aware that, um, we did a change order to increase that amount by a dollar, under fifty thousand dollars. So with that, we're at about two-point-seven million. And now then, the project is completed, we're still waiting on final billing, but I wanted to review this with you and show you everything that went into this project and give you the total cost, put it on record as such. Uh, second page of my agenda memo indicates, reflects that we invested, uh, three-point-one, oh-three, six-thirty-four towards this project. We haven't paid that all yet, but that's the total amount of the project. And so, um, we're coming to you to reveal that, ask you to ratify that total amount and also to, uh, ask for a, uh, budget amendment in the amount of one-fifty, one-eighty-five, uh, to, to balance that line item within the general fund for this fiscal year. Last fiscal year, uh, is already closed out.
Who are you talking about? Where at?
Page two of your memo that's in your...
On your drop pad.
It's on your, it's in your... I'll get to that next. That's the next document I'm after, is this big one. If y'all have this big document. I know we normally don't do that, but it was too small in your, in your iPad to be able to see it, so we...
I got you.
We printed it bigger. Now, I would like to tell you that the existing contract price, let me read that to you. What it actually says in the contract, under contract price, it says, "The owner shall pay contractor for completion of the work in accordance with the contract documents for the unit prices shown in the bid form. Bitter acknowledges that the estimated quantities are not guaranteed and are solely for the purpose of comparison bids. The final payment for all unit price bid items will be based on actual quantities determined as provided in the contract documents." And so while we appropriated a little over two-point-seven million dollars, we executed an agreement that says we'll pay the unit price that's in this contract for how many units it needs, which brings me to the next point. Our engineer put in those quantities and then when we get out to the project, this sheet will show you the differences. And that will help you understand why the cost is so much higher than what we originally appropriated. So the first column where it says, uh, approved bid tab, those are the quantities that were in the bid document. We highlighted those in yellow, uh, of the ones that are, have some discrepancies. Now, I will say this for the engineering firm, some of the, of the quantities were lower than what was in the bid document and some were higher, but predominantly the, the numbers were higher, which caused the total amount of the appropriation to need to increase. So the, the green line indicates the shortage and sometimes the overage. If it's in brackets, that means it's a shortage. And so like on line number five, it says excavation roadway. You can see that line, it says, "The bid quantity was a hundred and seventy-three dollars, or a hundred and seventy-three units at thirty-five dollars a unit, which extended with six thousand and fifty-five dollars." In reality, we had a total of a thousand and seventeen units and if you extend that out, that's thirty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. So that was just for some excavation of the roadway, that's the discrepancy that went in. And I can only explain it to you this way, if you're remodeling a house, you don't really know what you're gonna get into till you get into it. And that's kind of the way it is when you're redoing streets and you start pulling things up, you don't know what you end up with. And then also, uh, you can go down the whole list and you can see, uh, in the gold color, those are the overages and underages for the engineer. The third column where it says difference for the city, these are actual changes that, uh, I implemented based on the seventy-five thousand dollar contingency that y'all awarded when we did the project so that we could keep it going if something came up. And you can see that, um, I'm proud to say that you also did the fifty-five thousand dollar, or the fifty thousand dollar change order. I'm proud to say that, uh, uh, there's about less than twenty thousand actual changes that we did administratively on behalf of the city that wasn't covered by those two, two amounts. So, uh, we're in good shape there. The, the problem is, is we've got a deficit in, in quantities from the, uh, bid document itself. I guess the most egregious thing that offended me the most was the landscape pavers, uh, in the roadway going into courthouse. You can all remember sitting here, watching the presentations from our, from our, uh, engineering firm that illustrated where the brick pavers were gonna be. When we actually see them working on the project, they're not preparing to put bricks in some of those areas. And I stopped them and I told them that those are supposed to be brick. And, and so we did that and made them put that in, which is pretty substantial. If you look, uh, roadway pavers increased about forty-five thousand dollars. That's on line item twenty-three. So there was a bunch of changes that had to... So there was a bunch of changes that had to take place through the quantities. And if you recall, in, in the very first beginning phase, uh, they had to tear out some curb that was, uh, installed improperly. Because of the elevations, uh, provided by the engineers, did not match up. Engineers quintly, you know, redid those, and we had to tear that out, and we had to redo that area.
Look at fifty-three, Chris.
Oh yeah, I know, that's ridiculous. It just gets better the further you go.
No, it gets sicker.
Fifty-three was trench grates. We budgeted for six.
And we got twelve.
And we got twelve.
How does, how do we, how do we, how did we get to that point?
Well, again, the, the engineer didn't give it right.
The what?
Yeah, but you know, here's, here's the deal, Chris. You know, I do bill a half or two. I don't like remodeling. I did, I did one guy's house remodeling here in town. But, uh, you know, just say you remodel a house, and you say, "I'm gonna charge you X amount of dollars, and I'm gonna replace twelve light bulbs, or, or light fixtures." And you go in that house, and all of a sudden it's twenty-four, why in the heck wouldn't he know it to start with? If he thought it was six, and that's seventeen, I hope and pray we never use this engineering firm again.
Well, you'll have to have a city manager if you do. Because I won't use them, so.
Okay, I mean, I'm through with them. And, I mean, this is, what's this gonna wind up costing us altogether?
Altogether, the total amount is, by the way, we just got this tonight, so. Not like I hadn't read it.
No, 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 that was in your packet. He just made a big copy.
I did not see it.
He, well, that, that's why he made a big one, so he could see it.
It's in, it's in there.
Right in there.
No, it's not in there.
It is. I'm looking at it right now.
Sir, it may be in yours.
Okay, council, listen.
I deleted part of mine.
Okay, okay.
So the, the total cost is three point one oh three six hundred and thirty-four. And, and we need to, to balance our fund this year, we need a budget amendment for a hundred and fifty thousand, one eighty-five. Last year's budget is already closed, and we're gonna be over budget about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in that category when we, when we finally get our annual audit together. So, that's what we're looking for, and be happy then, but I will like, like for you to reflect back to this memo, and it, it kinda goes through all these different line items. Uh, say like item twenty-two, sidewalk landscape pavers exceeded the engineer's estimate due to missing calculation for overall project. And then there were seventeen square yards that I added, and it doesn't say it's city manager, it just says seventeen square yards of overage were added for the project on the northeast corner of Bridge and Crockett. So, um, that's, that's with our change order, what we added. And so, but we had to identify that in this memo to you. So there were changes that took place, and some of them were large and some were small, but overall, the project cost three point one million dollars. And I wanted to let everybody know exactly what it cost, and that's why it's on the agenda. And that's why we would like to ratify the total construction cost and do a budget amendment for the hundred and fifty thousand, one eighty-five.
Chris, how much, how much we get back from the state, uh, tax dot?
Tax dot has funded, um, one point six and some change towards this project. On this document that's within your bid packet as well.
So we're short one point six million?
No.
Um, you're-
Uh, it's-
Okay.
One point five.
We appro, we appropriated two point six seven three million. That's what we originally appropriated. Out of that, one point six one nine was state funding, and the rest was ours. Now, some of that's water lines that didn't have anything to do with the project, and we had to do a lot of those water lines, about seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of water lines that weren't included in this bid document, that when we got in there and started tearing out water lines, we had to keep replacing them. And so there were four extra water taps that had to be done as well, and that comes out of the utility fund. But what I'm talking about tonight is the general fund budget amendment. All right, wait a minute. Okay.
I, I'm real confused, I'm sorry, folks out there, but if, if, if we, if it's three point one and one point six, is, we're paying one point five million?
Yeah, it's about a fifty-fifty deal.
Okay, but I thought at the beginning of this, he was told us that we'd have to put in two hundred thousand or four hundred thousand.
Four hundred.
And that was it.
And then we added the water lines.
How come women? The water lines cost us one point five million?
Nope. Water lines, we added the water lines because we were tearing up the streets.
That's seventy thousand.
No, that was two hundred and forty-six thousand for, for the main water line. And then whenever we had, got in there and started doing it, we had to do some more with some more valving and stuff that took us all the way to Babe's Alley.
And that's included in here.
In the three point one, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm trying to get you the entire cost for the entire project on this document.
Did anybody ever come to any of the departments or you and say, "This is gonna cost us a lot more money than we thought"?
Yeah, we knew that whenever we saw that the engineering was wrong. Listen, you know those brick, those block limestone pavers that we had to put next to the building? The, the, this is a good picture of how bad it was. They didn't even put in the estimate, the lineal footage for Bridge Street for those sidewalk pavers to be relocated along those buildings. They just did it on Houston Street. They missed the estimates, bad. I can't explain why, but the contract document is written to where legally we're bound to owe that amount of money.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilperson Reiner?
I know the project is done, I think we probably just need to move forward and figure out what we need to do from here. I understand there are always overages, particularly in something like this, this is a massive project. I know previously the council had approved seventy-five thousand dollars of contingency, contingency funding, which I know we've exceeded far, far above that. Uh, I know we have the clause in there stating that we must pay this, which we probably need to address in future contracts. Are we, or, and we haven't paid this yet, correct?
We have not paid it all yet.
Okay, is there any possibility of negotiating with the firm, some of these where there is a significant overage on behalf of the engineering oversight?
Which firm are you talking about?
The engineering firm, yeah.
We probably need to talk about that in executive session.
Can we talk about that tonight? I, I would like to say we don't pay them a nickel until we work it out. I don't have our bills filled, but I'm real disappointed.
Councilman Mobley?
So, and it's no secret, I was one of the votes that voted no on this, and I'm always entertained when something's sold as a four hundred thousand dollar project, and we know going in it's not gonna happen. So to go from four hundred thousand dollars to, our part is one point five million dollars, I thought, that's a little hard to stomach. And, and folks out there that were in favor of the project, hey, I think, I've been trained to say, "It's beautiful, it's ours," and it is. And the concrete's dry, the paint's dry, we're gonna live with it. We owe this bill. We're gonna have to pay, we're gonna have to pay these bills because it's in the contract. My disappointment falls in the fact that we're finding out now what the final damages are, and yeah, the forms are gone, the construction guys are gone, we cracked the champagne on the side of the building and said, "Look what we've got," and now the final bills are coming in. Chris, how does this happen?
Well, it happened right now. We started getting the bills in October and November, and, uh-
Were you as surprised as we are?
Yes.
Were you not being communicated by these folks?
Um, not, not really. I mean, we were, we were doing it based on quantities, and, uh-
There was no communication at all? Who were they communicating with?
Uh, when you say they, who are you talking about?
Freezing Nichols.
Freezing Nichols was not communicating whatsoever.
With anybody?
No.
So they have an open checkbook, just keep billing us?
Well, they're not billing us, the contractor is. We paid a contractor?
Nobody's talking, okay, so who's talking to the contractors?
We are.
And they're not communicating any of this, that it's not falling within the guidelines that we laid forth?
It, it is not-
Is there anybody that's gonna have a house built by anybody, Mr. Allen, you know this, that's just gonna say, "Call me when you're done, and, and I'll write you a check"? Anybody out there?
Can I read the bid document to you again?
You don't need to read it to me, trust me, I've read it three times today.
Um, yeah, I was just telling you that, uh, we bid a project based on quantities of project.
Who is, who is leading this project for us? There's nobody saying, "Hey," I'm shocked.
I'm not gonna throw any of my employees under the bus, I'll just say, "I'm, I'm the one carrying the load here."
Okay.
Mayor? Councilman Mobley, that-
So, my point is this, it's, it's really nice if we have one point of contact with the city, because, Mr. Kaufman, I love you, and you know that, but if we're gonna judge you on your performance, we're gonna let you do your job the way you should. We cannot, as council people, and the new folks up here, please understand that, we cannot be project managers for anything up here, nothing, because it takes your power away. And if I'm gonna get, if I'm gonna get in your business, I want you to do it for something you did, not somebody that pulled the trunk card and said, "I'll handle this," and pushed you out of the way. So, new council people, please don't be a project manager for anything, even if it's your own driveway in front of your yard. Thank you.
Mayor? Councilman Couch?
Um, Chris, of, 'cause the, the part that would qualify under the grant was intended to be a ninety-ten split. So-
Eighty-twenty.
Okay, eighty-twenty. So, the part that wouldn't qualify is the water lines, right?
Water lines and engineering.
So what I'm interested in, and I've asked this, I think, the third time now, um, is to go back, uh, to the grant people to see if we can, uh, do an amendment or re-apply for funds if they're available, um, for the overages that would qualify under the grant project. Have we done anything like that?
Talked to the engineer, and they said that it might be possible, but there's no funds right now.
But those come up once a year, right?
Well, not really. They come up, uh, on a federal program as they appropriate them.
Okay.
Um, I don't mind, I don't mind reapplying for more funds, I'm just letting you know that today, I'm showing you where we're at, what the project costs, and what we need to administratively close out the project on our books and be ready to move on and move forward.
Okay. But could you get back to us, um, with, with, uh, what the possibilities might be on a supplemental?
Sure.
If you wanna call it that?
I'll look into it.
On the grant side.
I'll look into it again.
No problem. Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Allen?
I'm like, Council Mobley, I, I voted against this to start with, I love it, I think it's a beautiful job. Still make the corners, sometimes on the curbs and sometimes off, getting better. But I don't want you to throw anybody under the bus, Mr. City Manager, but, you know, if somebody walked up, sure as heck we had somebody on that project that knew they were gonna cut two times as many curbs as once as in the bid. Somebody had to see this bid, original deal, and it just, I mean-
Can I address that?
Yeah, please do.
If you'll look at line item eight, they, they expect a forty-six hundred bid quantity at twenty-four dollars a unit price, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We actually spent seventy-nine thousand dollars, which gave you a thirty-one thousand dollar savings.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That offsets a whole lot of that one right above it that's off thirty-five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
So this is a running project, we're on a timeline to construct a project within a specific time, and y'all told me, "Let's get it finished." You appropriated seventy-five thousand dollars to allow me to work things through, and I did that with the changes that we did. However, I have no ca, control over the lack of quantity estimated, or the overage of quantity estimated on another line item. All you can do is move forward and get the project done and read it and weave at this point.
Look at number twelve, a hundred and fifty-two thousand.
I know.
In a red. One item.
Yep.
That would've been, if you're building a house or apartment or whatever, that'd be red flags flying all over.
Let me ask you, Mr. Allen, if, if we hire you to build me a house, and you say, "Okay, I'm gonna build it, and I'm gonna charge you by how many boards we put up."
By how many boards? I would bid it that way.
But if you did, how many sticks or widgets or whatever units? And, and I have an architect that says, "Okay, tell me how much those, those units are gonna cost." And, oh, by the way, we think it's this many, but don't hold us to it. You're gonna bid a number based on how many you think it's gonna be, and you're gonna know that you're gonna get paid by the bid unit price.
Okay.
Regardless of how many quantity there are.
First of all, I didn't know it was that way in that contract, and I bet money you did either.
I didn't either. I didn't either.
I don't think there was anybody to look at, I don't even know who, who our attorney was at that time, if he looked at it or not.
Yeah, well, he did.
I agree with what you're saying, Chris, or, Mr. City Manager, I, I'm like, Miss Mob, I love you.
I know.
But gosh, this is a big, big, big mistake in somebody's department. And that's all I'm gonna say.
I got Rick standing there ready to answer any questions, but I don't want him to answer any questions, 'cause this is a whole organization.
We're ready for it.
This is not Rick's fault, this is not John's fault. This is a simple fact that we, we bid a project with, with bad data.
So I guess the, the most optimistic thing is to put, put something in place so that when we find ourselves dealing with engineers, that we don't just trust what they have to say, especially when it comes to, um, a grant situation. I think we need to, um, resource someone to actually look over what the engineer submitted as a bid, for, like, a second opinion.
You need, you should be able to rely on your engineer that you hired on a contract basis to provide better workmanship than this.
Well, what we could put in the contract is if they don't, that they, they pay the price.
And here's the thing, why would an engineer miss it this bad?
That's right.
And that's the question the whole council's got, I mean, and they've used the example of building a house, and I gotta agree, if, if somebody bids something, and they say it's gonna take this many pavers to do what we said we wanna do, and if we change, look, they usually end up exo, you know, they, they take that on the chin and move on and try to make it up someplace else. That's not what happened here, they, we took it on the chin.
Have we mentioned the, the engineers yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and my, my thought process is, is, is we would never have approved this project had they put these quantities that it actually took to do the job in the bid document.
No.
We would not have done it.
And we should've never signed it with that language in a contract.
I agree. I won't. I've never seen one like that before in my life.
That we did.
Who's responsible for our warranty?
Um, same company.
Just sad day in, grandberries, all I can say.
Oh, it's not that sad.
Hundred and fifty grand, even a hundred and fifty grand, I smile.
Even, even-
It's not funny. It, it, it's a mistake that was made, and we can talk about it in executive session.
I agree. So, that's where we're at, we're asking for a ratification of the three point one million dollar project with a hundred and fifty-one thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollar budget.
So, that's what we're asking for, council, uh, any more discussion on it?
We're entertaining a motion to amend the budget for the general fund and ratifying the total construction cost of the town square streetscape project as you have seen here in front of you today. I have a motion. Gary's got a motion, Mr. Couch has got a motion. Do we have, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Hate to ask this, but is there any more discussion on this? No further discussion. Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner, how do you vote?
Aye.
That is approved with one nay.
Thank y'all. Staff appreciates you working with us to get this resolved and move it ahead.
Thank you, Rick, for the, uh, suggestion there.
I would like to add one opposing comment to this.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, our contractor did finish in the timely manner that was required. Yes, quantities were more than we expected. were more than we expected. Yes, we extended water lines far beyond what we expected, which required additional paving beyond what we expected. But not one business on the square closed their door because of our project. And I think that us working close with them helped do that. And there's a lot of intrinsic value to the success that we've added. And I know that, that the quantities that we discussed tonight are outrageous in what had to be done. But let's admit that if we'd have stopped in the middle of it, we'd still be doing construction. So we felt like we needed to move forward and do it based on what the bid document is. Thank you all very much for approving what we needed tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Our next item is to consider making a recommendation for one member to serve on the Visiting Granbury Incorporated Board of Directors as the City of Granbury representative to fill the unexpired term. Do you want to talk about that?
That would be, within the terms of our agreement with Visiting Granbury, the council is privileged to be able to nominate up to two people to serve from either the council or the staff on that board. And so we need to allow that to be appointed by y'all tonight.
And we had one council member on there that is no longer with us, so we have at least one.
She, she's serving and so now she's not eligible to serve because our, our, our rules say that it has to come from the council or staff.
Exactly. Council, any discussion on that item? Do I have a nomination? Recommendation?
I'd like to nominate Trish if she'd be up to it.
Okay, Mr. Councilman Couch has nominated Trish Reiner.
I'll stop it.
If she would be up to it.
If she would be, yeah.
Well, I haven't heard anything from her back there.
If she's not, if she's opposed.
I haven't heard anything from her down there. So, so I have a nomination for Trish Reiner. Any more nominations, council?
There you go.
Well, if not, though.
Do we, do we have any staff who would be willing to serve?
We would-
Chris said no.
It's-
And why would that be?
Well, listen, it's a great organization, but let's face it, this is a situation where we need council members serving on that because we don't need staff to just be going along for the ride. So we need independent elected people representing us there.
Chris, weren't you on that for a little while or did you?
I was. I was on there for the startup and was able to provide the services as being the secretary and-
So you say that with what you've experienced and your observation and-
I think that, that, yeah, it's, it put me in a precarious situation to, to do anything but go along with the group. Simple as that. I'm the city manager, so.
Trish, are you up to serving on this board this early in the stage here?
I, I do have one question.
Okay.
I, I do have a full-time job. So I'm a shocker. I have children to feed. If there is an instance where I am unable to attend the meeting, can I send somebody in my stead or?
I think it'd just be a vacancy.
Just be a vac-
Yeah, it's no big deal. If it pays good.
There's a lot of corn.
It pays good. Sold.
They meet at 8:00 AM on typically Wednesdays, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's once a month. It's the second Thursday, I believe of, so our next meeting is next, a week from Thursday.
Is that a, just to help, is that a one year, two years, or whenever you decide to jump off of it?
It's a two-year term.
Two years?
Two-year term, okay.
And I think there's a term limit.
If-
Up to three terms. I'm not sure.
Is there any, and I haven't read the whole contract. Is there anything in there if you are unable to attend the meetings or at, at some point if somebody-
If you miss three in a row, you are not allowed.
If you miss three in a row, then you're not there no more. Is that what it is? Okay. So you researched it, don't you?
Yes, I have.
Trish, all right.
Not with this intention, but yes, I have.
Do we need to make a motion?
So with that said, we have a nomination, we have a recommendation of Trish Reiner to fill that vacancy, fill that board from the city. All, we got a motion and a second? We got a second to be able to-
I'll say.
We got a second? Who was the second with? Mr. Allen?
That'd be fine.
Okay. So we have the motion and the second. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of Trish Reiner serving there, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
God bless.
Very good, Trish. You will be our representative on that. Well, at this point, I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened in open session and that all our members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the positions of the Texas Government Code, Section 551071, consternation with our attorney, Section 551072, deliberation regarding real property, and Section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Council will convene in closed session. The council has now reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in the closed session. Council, is there any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would like to make a motion that we authorize Chris to negotiate with the Granbury ISD on the Decker Gym properties and the land donation and come back to the council with an agreement.
Second that motion, but let's make it Chris Kaufman or City Manager. Still just Chris.
We have a-
I'm sorry, everybody else understood the motion.
We have a motion.
I know, but people out there might not know who Chris is.
We have a motion by Tony Mobley and a second by Tony Allen. Is there any discussion, council? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That motion is approved. We'll look forward to that results from that meeting. Council, is there any more discussion? If no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.